Special meeting today, September 18th. There's no calls or items. Mr. Secretary, could you call the room please?
Good afternoon everyone. It's Adelbert Amber Brand.
Yes.
It's Roland Mullinart, absent. Lisa Harris Moorehead, absent. Lady Adam and all of the other women here, absent. It's Rupiah W. Ross, absent. It's Glenn Webster, here. It's Raymond J. Williams, absent. J. Williams is out. Fireman, not absent. Not a failure to be a bottomless floor.
Thank you. Nonetheless, ladies and gentlemen, the reason why we're here is because two individuals who filed a notice that we have in hand from the 15th of September, request a recon ballots or ballots in the primary election. If you look in the back, they made the reference to names of written candidates. And under the words Angela, the district boards of election. If there's a question of intention of the voter as to the spelling of the individuals, name the writing is clearly enough of the intention of the voter. Then it's the board of elections in the district where the writing took place to determine if the name of the person that was writing will receive the appropriate vote as the intention of the voter. And this instance, we have Mr. Martin T. Merrick and the head of government, Mr. Pop Shomburg. As it relates to the law, the words Angela, Title 18, clearly states what the function of the board when it comes to these requests. We have a timetable to address the request after the individuals have determined that they want a challenge for a recon. And will recon ballots and words Angela written.
You have a code?
Yeah, we can vary it. Under Title 18, then vary it. Under Title 18, I think the section is chapter 43 that have been amended in Acts 74, 71, 2012, and Acts 75, 76 of 2013. A lot have been changed, mainly some of the other members who are not here never paid attention for whatever reason may have been not here. And it outlines under six with the nine recon procedure, new elections in a team. A petition for a recon may be filed by any candidate in the primary or election who believe that it has been fraud or error committed, make handles in or return of the votes cast in such primary elections. And it goes on to tell you the timetable. The petition may not be filed later than seven working days after the board issues its official report of the primary, general election, or special election in which the votes were cast. Nonetheless, we would have been able to determine today by the board and not the chairman, with the quorum present, to go over the concerns and modify. After the council, the petitioners, that the petition is written and the record is made is more than seven days after the board certified results of election. And that's basically, we had to do that by law. It's not that Bob Brand or Mr. Webster felt like it has to be by law. Give me a copy of the statute. Excuse me. It outlines everything. And we'll have in mind, members sent in some email to Mr. Tyler Alexander. And we need to read everything to the record so we can understand that we need to be consistent as members of the board. I think those of us that have read the Inspector General Report have many complaints that the board and supervisor election have never responded or acknowledged, received complaints or receipts of any repeal or appeal of any statute. So the people never thought of an answer or a result. So in this instance, as the chairman, my responsibility is to make sure we have compliance. And basically, that's what we have been here today to determine.
But they tried to put this on too late.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The timing table, under six for the nine. So since we're here, we don't have a quorum. I would ask, since the Webster, to read the emails that the council could know we have in the record. We have Mr. from Williams, Mr. Ross, and Mrs. Moorehead. Send an email telling us where they can come into the review, please.
Okay. It's from Mrs. Lisa Harris Moorehead. She writes, greetings, Mr. Alexander. Directed to Mr. Alexander, the admin assistant. Please advise Chairman Brand that I will not be able to attend a special meeting call for this evening. He should be further advised that the agenda item listed is under consideration by the joint board. I recommend that no action be taken on the request until the joint board concludes. Concludes, it should be, concludes its assessment of the situation. And then one from Mr. Rupiah Ross, Jr. Has pleaded advice to Chairman Brand that I will not be able to attend a special meeting call for this evening. He should be further advised that the agenda item listed is under consideration by the joint board. I recommend that no action be taken on the request until the joint board conclude. Also, it should be concludes its assessment of the situation. So this is like an exact same.
Exact same grammatical errors. Yeah. You have one move. Where's Mr. Raymond? Where's your Raymond here, Raymond?
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Farrell. Please pass on my following concerns to the chairman. Once again, we are being called into a emergency meeting to discuss an item that is presented before the joint boards of election. Secondly, the chairman continues to abuse his authority to summons the district board without due consideration of its membership. I understand that several members have already indicated their inability to attend. I will not be in attendance for those of our reasons. I pray that he will not attempt to call this meeting in order, to order with the knowledge that no quorum is available.
Basically, that is the response from this other member.
What do you think?
I think Mr. Farrell, he has noticed some member only.
Yes, he should have prior commitment. I think she told me on medical, she got that or something.
That's where we are, ladies and gentlemen. As a result, you can examine the statute for yourself. We can provide you with a copy. If you read it yourself, you see if the members are familiar or they're just playing games. This is copyright. Huh? You asked for the. So Mr. Farrell Alexander, if you can draw the favor, please, you can take some copy for the individual's case so that they can read for themselves. And they will be the justice. So basically, as I said earlier, the board of election needs this. Regardless of whether Mr. Williams, Mr. Ross, or Mr. Moorehead are obedient, for all these years writing these emails, they should be keeping up the statute as it relates to the law. They want to be in the board forever, then keep up forever. I didn't read the law. The gentleman brought his complaint, the 15th, at the last day. Within three days, you must address the concern. Meaning that you would have to lay back to Mr. Merrick and Mr. Shomburg to arrange and decide on the date when we have a recon. But when you have a recon, the candidate will be present. It is written in the law. And no person will be able to be involved, obstructing the process. So it means basically that when the table is set today, if the request was timely, then would notify Mr. Shomburg or Mr. Merrick as to what date and time and place when they're on the recon. So since the request was untimely as related to the statute on the three days or the seven days. This particular time, we have to draft a letter to these individuals, telling them, unfortunately, we could not address, addressing a recon because it was untimely. And specific language in the court said the board and not the supervisor. And our record will show what date and we certified the primary result. In this question, you were concerned with names that were different, and they were saying that the name was close enough. And is the board in each district would determine the intention of the candidate putting the writing in or selecting. So the joint board could not be the one jointly determining intention of the district candidate that was writing. And they have names in St. Thomas Supply, St. Orange Supply in this issue. So this district will still have to go in all district writing page and extract these names and compare them of the intention of the voter. So that's basically why we're here today. Since we don't have it, we can't.
I have a suggestion.
Mr. Webster.
Since we can't have a meeting, we don't have a meeting today, can we draft a letter letting them, informing them that their petition was untimely? So we can't, sorry, we don't violate the three day statute. We could do that and have the automatic muster in half.
Sure, we can do that. Except we can also send a copy to the chair of Lisa Wells and copy Mr. Watlington and all the members here because if it's in fact a territorial or a joint board function, the joint board should be.
It's not, it's a district function.
But if they feel it was a joint board function because of the email.
But they can feel how they want. We know what that, we know different, so.
So I mean, right? I don't have no problem with that. So we draft.
But that is board here.
Okay, so we do that. And that's how we would address this concern and the joint board writing, Ms. Lisa Wells, Mr. West, Watlington, and other board members that what we did today with the intentions, since we don't have a quorum, they will come back and say, see, they have a quorum, we couldn't agree to write on that anyway.
Forget, forget, forget to sign off.
We could do that, true, but in keeping up with our obligations as a board, that's as far as we can go.
We just need to.
But let me ask a question. The fact that the letter from the petition was untimely, does it not move the fact whether you have to respond in the three days?
Well, it will be responsible for me to respond to them if I know because I would expect a response from the voters. Because that's the reference Inspector John made. Whether it was untimely or not, the only way the petitioner or complainant would know what we don't know, we tend to do to tell them, one, thank you for your concern and your request. But in fact, according to the late in chapter 23, six twenty-nine, A, B, C, we know we find that it was untimely. It's unfortunate, but we have to respond.
So then we have a feeling that on the Republican Party, we have to cancel the territorial, because of this. Respond to them, and I don't know, we're not for it.
So any other questions?
I have a question, a concern. Since all of the writing was from St. Troy, should the St. Troy board deal with those from St. Troy?
Right.
And let St. Thomas deal with those from St. Thomas? And then a combined joint board meeting of all at the end?
That's what I'm saying. Since the St. Thomas, St. Thomas District Board haven't reacted or knew it, this board work to make sure that we notify and make it clear that we kept the meeting. Since we don't have a quorum, the record will show there nothing good, that we have the reasons of compliance in three days, and the board members felt that it shouldn't be here. And when the joint board took the meeting, it was on the record. We need to have a record of what we did. We can't because the joint board said it wasn't going to do anything. And the matter of fact, the joint board really didn't complete the agenda we had, when this was an agenda. So what really happened, Mr. Watlington left, and other members, after eight days left, so the agenda that was there would never have been completed. So if they never complete the agenda, that's not board or Mr. Waterton, Mr. Webster's fault. We were here announcing what an agenda to be addressed, except that the claim, Mr. Waterton was saying, one is legal document, and all has to go. Recon, recon by law have to be responded to whether it is timely or timely, day, board, joint, and district must meet to address it to change the timetable, under six for the nine.
I understand that, and that's why I don't understand the three of them later. I mean, they gone straight to the joint board instead of dealing with the district?
It is a district issue.
That's what I'm saying, but the three of them later is talking about the joint board.
I could share the email with that.
I don't know what going on with that.
Yeah, one thousand things on it, or two, five, one, one thousand.
Exactly, and like you say, the letter seems as though it's one thousand writing, that's a usual thing. I mean, they keep following these past practices, which is wrong. If it's wrong, it is wrong. Correct it.
But they don't think it's wrong. They think, they think they're right.
That's why they have to come up with the board when we vote. Get them off.
Exactly. I ain't gonna tell who to do what to do, but the purpose of the meeting basically to inform you what the problem is. If we have, longevity doesn't make something right. Longevity, it will leave something a lot wrong forever until somebody corrects it. But nonetheless, that's the way it works here. And the code is clear, anybody have their copy? You can read it, and you can tell it all you want. But I know the statute has been amended 12, 2012, 2013. And the members that are not here, where notice they wrote, I can't respond to what they write because as Mr. Webster is saying, two of the languages are identical and the same, so you need.
Exact same.
Graphic together, but nonetheless.
Exact same grammatical errors.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
The code book is, the code book, I mean.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, why I'm asking that question? Because I know I have something meeting. And I saw where legislation has passed after. And Janie Brimson, he held whatever came from the legislature in the white binder in his office. Other board members did not know statute had changed.
Well, it's the responsibility of everybody there because each of these books, and everybody have a supplement that comes every year, the annotated copy have 2011, 2012, and 2013. Everybody, remember the board have a 2013 annotated copy. And the document that I just gave you, you can go and complete on Google, and you'll notice it tells you in 2012, one act, in 2013, another act amended. It's clear, so that documents of today, everybody here in the code that they have, have a supplement in the back. That is how it is. If you read it different, so how many, Mr. Waterton, reading it? Fine with me, but I know that the law is clear that the district certifies the election and the candidacy in the district. The joint board collectively would go over because you comparing the certification and intent of the voter from each district to accumulate the total amount of ballots. And that's the only we can take this. It's not that we can't look at the names because the writing names.
Actually, I don't send it already, but I wanted to know by the.
Who?
I'll tell you about something.
Okay. Okay, so I'm saying is that the intention of the voter. If I write S C O one T, and I put light and I spell T bird. The intention of the voter is given, it's been most cut, label. And if I put label, it's cut. It's still the same person, intention of the voter. You put L label, then it's a.
We needed that you are here from the morning till the afternoon, that they were discussing. Well, first they say what we've done, said that they come with this package, that these ladies cannot refuse. And then when the meeting finished, you was, you trying to discuss amendment for the package. And they keep telling you, there is no package. But I think what happened, Watlington opened his mouth too soon about the package, and I think.
That package thing was dead, by the time he bring it because he didn't even bring something for we to see.
But what I'm saying, they're telling.
That was, that was done, done, done.
They're telling you about the package.
He might have grabbed, have a package or whatever, but he don't got it, he don't, but he can't. That's definitely a joint board issue, one. That never was done, he couldn't get anybody else in first.
I have another question. I have another question.
You ready?
Could I get a copy of whatever last ballot that was drafted as a final ballot? Because I had one from the Monday before, and I thought that was the final one.
The last two we gave them out here, I gave you one.
So that is the last ballot that's going to the vendor? Or there's one after that?
As I know.
The one on Friday that should get changed. Before Alicia tried to.
Well, that one I don't want. I need anything for my record, because I'm not ready. No, I. Go ahead, Mr. Elifan, get a copy of that.
You have any of these ballots that they were starting to cover there? You just have some, you know, you're going to borrow them? You're going to give it to me or not?
Thank you. They're just stressing people out, oh, please.
So you are waiting on George Will Malloyis? On the 26th, Mr. Washington, no?
Well, George Will Malloyis have, up until the 26th, decided what she's going to do with us. She set a time certain she wanted, Mrs. Jackson, the AG's office, who are working tandem in a collusion effort to make up for money, she accept what they were saying. But what they were doing was relating four eleven football as a defective application. The issue was not defective document. The issue was being ineligible to even circulate a petition when you have a defective petition. The document that you submit, they will tell you with a notice mark, there was a defect in your petition. Your name was not recognized in the ballot. When you were discussing over, nickname with a full name. You didn't put your right address. Your name was spelled wrong. When they checked the ledger, your name was not appeared in the ledger, as how you wanted it, but. We're going to put on that issue, and Judge Robert Malloyis says that since they had made a motion in St. Thomas to have past practices of nickname and right name, providing that you don't have more than 22 letters. That's time, so therefore, Miss Barbara Jackson McIntosh, when they check it out, she had 23. So they had to go ahead and change it to Barbara Jo. Jack So McIntosh. If you look at the thing, you see a N. You won't see a N. So that law requires the board or supervisor election to reduce it, to put Jack So McIntosh, or P, or J McIntosh. That was done, so when you see if you see it missing it, again, there's a different document, and it's supervisor election who send out to the candidate that was a defect in your documents. Court, Supreme Court rule, Alicia Hansen, this is us, is not eligible to be on the ballot. And therefore, not eligible to have a petition to determine. So even if you turn up petition with your name spelled wrong and acting, all of that, that's a different acting on a four eleven photo, as opposed to the court determining her or any other candidate ineligible to hold office pursuant to revise a delicate. So Judge Lewis will have to decide which way she want to go. And since the Supreme Court have reformed their position of invisibility, that is what should stand because we dealing with what we know the conclusionary order versus a temporary restraining order, which is a TRO. So the TRO does before the district court, before Judge Lewis. She will have until the 26th, or she could be tomorrow, she could be Monday or Tuesday, to have an emergency case what she have concluded to grant, a permanent injunction and a declaratory judgment, and she must explain why she choose her declaration to be correct. Except that the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court of the Royal Court, the highest court of the land, and the 12th Circuit Court have already written, telling them that the district court must follow the lead from the highest court of the land. Otherwise, if this gentleman goes to Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court that he's run, then he could probably go to Great Britain or Jamaica, court and overrule United States Supreme Court, that can happen. So until the district court judge, Ms. Lewis, writes her final declaration of her intervention, the question of constitutionality is a joke, it can be. Because if all of you in the back, they want this gentleman to be governor, and I want another six to be governor, then who's being denied the right? Because suppose this gentleman is ineligible to hold office, you could write petition, or you're not being denied the right to pick a person to constitute an issue. You are not entitled to pick a person because you're not eligible to hold an office. So as an example, you want 10,000 people in Atlanta who said they want William's or the children in Atlanta to be out of jail and become the mayor of Atlanta, then he should go to become a mayor of Atlanta. You want Charles Manson to come from California, 20,000 votes, then they could go to court and say they can't, she's not right, it's being denied because they want Charles Manson out of the dark trial to come up and be governor. Those things are related. It's a game we're playing, and when you have the attorney's round claiming to represent the board of election, and court have never been sought, have you been sought on this opinion yet? So representing the board and representing the facts. If they're putting a representation to the court similar to the petitioners in this case, that is a conclusive action to be denied right now. So I just wait in, I rush in, whether the court decide, it could end up here, it could end up to the 12th Circuit or the Supreme. And I think the reason why they ended up to play in the district court, because they already said that through Mrs. Attorney Rule, the only avenue they have over the Royal Court of Supreme Court is to get a certiorari from the United Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court does have a petition for certiorari probably four, five, 600, and only here will eat you like that. And they have a timetable and a schedule to hear cases. So all I can do, anybody here can do is wait until the district court will lose the rest of findings because they're giving them an opportunity Friday to come back within the five, a quarter hour to file any additional discovery or concern that they had for that day. They gave them until four hours to come up to explain the cure of the pardon. And a pardon is different from expulsion of record. It can be pardon for offense, but your records have to get sponged to not be there. And the condition, whether financial obligation or whatever it is, remains there. And certain courts don't recognize, because the governor of the Royal Court is a territorial governor under the Department of Interior versus a state governor who is under the state constitution and the president. They have categories of pardons. So these things, if you were, where, now to keep them ignorant, you have the same condition. So I'm not forcing one way, that the final results have to come to an end. So when the time come, if the judge makes a decision and needs to review, you may go to the 12th Circuit, and she backs away, and they turn back the TRO, then she write a justification away, the merits of the case and likelihood of success, or there's newly reputable harm to the five individuals, who actually one of them is central staff employees, part pay workers, central staff, and other employees work for the central Hanson staff, and another lady works to human services. So all those concern, courts have to take into consideration, and from there we can move on. So until that court is final, it remains the same. I don't wake up really wondering what happened. I wait until it happens because I remember a couple years ago, before Judge Lewis became the judge and chief judge here. Then Attorney was, you know, probably near St. Thomas as a judge, and she herself wrote an article in the paper suggesting that the selection process for judges needs to be revamped. I don't know, she was talking with herself or somebody else. So that's what happened.
No.
So you can't, it's over here.
So the TRO, it could be extended past the date that's set now?
No, it has to, finally, this position has to, and the merits of what the judge have before her, whether she agree with the four eleven of football, whether she delete because Judge Isher will write a vote. She can come with a permanent injunction and a declaratory judgment, and opinion, and of why she delete what they said, or she can deny the TRO and deny everything and explain why she have a four eleven that it was wrong.
So nothing can go past the 46th?
Shouldn't go. Well, as far as the judge can go, her decision is final until somebody decides to take it off. So if she rules against what Attorney Lirone and Attorney Lawrence requested, by putting Alicia Hansen back in the ballot, then they, Attorney Lawrence and Lirone, and the governor or the attorney judge and the governor or the attorney judge will have to join correct conclusively to appeal to the Third Circuit Court. And if they don't get there, then the judge's ruling will stand. Because you still have an avenue for contempt of court. Because I said already, you have what we call a preclusionary order, which was the Supreme Court order that Alicia Hansen was ineligible versus judge of the district would say, no, T R O, put her back until we finalize the decision. So well, that's what we have right now. So if you don't follow the question and comment, I'd like to try and argue for coming here today. And we can adjourn because we don't have a quorum, but we sign adjourn for record.
I don't think this court案子 is overtold in desktop since once.
No, what, what, what I think and what we believe is two different things. She have a right to feel who she want to feel. Maybe the facts had the opportunity to trust what took place before for the woman to be the person to make a decision behind the court ruling. Because everybody was okay to say, let the court decide. But we're here because Mr. Abramson.
Exactly right.
Mr. Abramson and the previous board before he got here, Ross, Moheer, Alita Dazler, Carmen Golden, Evelyn Nessa, and Raymond Williams. They allow Mr. Abrams. That's in jail. Allow Miss Hansen to bypass them and kept quiet when she was placed on the ballot. Knowing that once she was placed on the ballot and the people elected her, it was out of their hand and was left to the legislature, which then Russell, to convene a petition to remove her after they had known and kept a hearing to determine she was on this category because they had failed to determine what the county authority to accommodate what he said. But I think of Holden saying, you know what, Lewis, now he outside of him. He said a different story, no, she need to look up. I am not the one to judge that. I wait until the court make the final decision.
One last thing. Even to the, um, even to the issue of probation, right? They, even to that, there was nothing needed to be defined and they still allow that to stay right. But they couldn't be done to them that allowed that and they get dragged McIntosh situation.
Because if you read the case with Lawes versus Ma. Even though they will tell you only the legislature can determine the eligibility of its members, that's not final. The fact that they failed to do that, they too were in violation of the.
It happened in the beginning.
Yeah, sure. So because no person on probation is eligible to go. Must have been holding for this office. Alicia Hansen was in the legislature in the twenty-nine legislature whilst she was on probation. And you read the sentencing report, just put the district court, they have something wrong here, you can see it. She had categories of performance for sentence. She get a dollar for it, she had to let them know. If she sell a piece of land, they had to report it. For what Alicia required to go to St. Thomas of Oklahoma, she had to get permission from the court to travel. She wanted to go to New York for Florida, she had to get permission. All these conditions and probation and condition, if you violate any one of them, you begin to solve the same due time as the time you had on probation. So I'm saying out of that, the monitoring process was lacked. The board, before any one of us got here, was out of line because in November seventh, nine, two thousand eleven, John Abrams wrote up a letter to Mr. Fraser, Mr. Ross, signed it and ran it ahead. Sent it to Mr. Fraser. Mr. Fraser wrote back three or four pages in seven nineteen, two thousand eleven, tell them right to the bottom. We have been told that the supervisor did not properly vet the candidate for her eligibility, so they tell you.
So the statute's limitation and then violating the code is they got timelines and then to be charged.
Yeah, because there are timeline in the Ma Lawes case that told them even though the legislature is a sole job of its members, they must do something. And ignoring and say she be on stage, then they will be violated, revised. And they can't be filed revised. And if I said no person, it's a not both, not Chucky or not you. There's no person who have been convicted of a felony or a crime involving more authority can be holding a office as a senator. It doesn't say for government, lieutenant governor, daily to conduct. So they're speaking that particular because those individuals are the ones that are making a lot. And penalty and probation and they are reset water. So if you check the record right here, on the time, Alicia Hansen registered in nineteen seventy-two. She have never been taken out of the voting list. So it is stated, Mr. Abrams has left her eligible to vote when she should hasn't been there. All those documents are written here. It's always a way that you can follow the chicken and the egg, chicken, cow, and the egg before the chicken raised her.
I have, I have a question. The package the candidates get now included in the financial report. Who handles the fina- financial report right now? Is it still that the Attorney General offered?
No, 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 please. Where the attorney, the package is? The attorney thing for employees, for Mrs. Witty, for Mrs. Fox. The financial report have two functions, they have two parts, a part A and a part B. One part stays here and a lot of parts go to Attorney John Harris. And from there, that is how the stuff will have wait to happen. This revisal election will have seen what is in there. You get a long application, questionnaire and candidate's information. And right under it tells you your name as the page of registration and all these things. And that's a police record. What people, people don't realize in the Virgin Islands, the police department would not have a record of individual who was tried and charged in a federal court. They would have records for somebody who was trained in superior court. So therefore, you can go to police department and can't find a record. For me, if I was trained in federal court and I have a long line of charges in the federal court. Mrs. Fox and John Abrams' obligation on technical eighteen-one oh nine E and F supposed to establish with the court that has taken in the jail to find out who is dead, who is where and where they are. Get the probation report, except that it cannot publish eighteen year and hundred record publicly, published that. But anybody over eighteen years' record is revisable lecture in their twenty-three year office by law and access and get information from the federal level. Whether here, there, or M C I C for the federal record because those are where they kept the federal trials and conviction, whether it's a superseding indictment or whether it's a trial or charge. If you look in the district court filing, you'll find in two thousand four, you'll find a twelve court indictment with Alicia Hansen, Ashley Andrews, Cameron Malone, Ohene Harris, and her husband. You have all kinds of things listed for mail fraud and all. And you come to two oh nine again, get a nine tongue super season indictment again, where she was charged with these failing tax issue situation. If you read the sentencing report, I think the upper departure on page twenty-two tells you that this defendant had a practice of continuously failing to file her taxes for at least two decades. And if I could come two decades, mean twenty years. So while you're hearing all this shit for this question, those are not things that I can add, but you can be charged with a lot of things. But your conviction finalized from the jury determine what the sentence said can be a condition. He read the governor's pardon and he says you pled guilty, that's not the truth. She was pled not guilty and found guilty by the jury. So these things, the governor, it's not really accurate information in his own situation. He plays in here that she went to school in a political and she make you guilty. But if you check the record filing, the former, she had two degrees, a mild son of a bar degree that cost seven hundred or something dollars. She is a game that you play around, keep it here because we don't try to inform or people enough to tell it to itself. If I tell you a lie often, that's how it starts to believe the lie. And ah, you like me and I'll take my life in the future. So that's how we do it. So I would have to wait until the district court finalized by the twenty-sixth or before. And from there, we see what happens. In my D, in the position of the original charge to the Supreme Court, with my D, Mrs. Fox and Mrs. Hansen and other board members who violated the code out of the Supreme Court. Because I don't know what happened.
My question for asking that is because I see the problem with how could have stopped a long time ago? It broke the Attorney General, the supervisor election and also I'm probably sure they have to report to IRB the findings. All three of them, we've all.
They, they can see, we go first, they didn't have a drop in the ball. It's whatever, what the cars to do that. Didn't have a drop in the ball, but come and say, you know, just told people that he let his son sit to run. And it was wait for him, Mr. Springer started ready, challenging him and they running away the building. So I don't even go back and forth with it. But let's wait and see what happens from here. So. Thank you for coming. Until we are judged, we have to wait.
Please do you challenging the woman?